Okay. I'll call the city council meeting for Thursday, March 30th, 2023. Everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here. Kevin Kadada.
Here.
Tim Rood.
Here.
Cindy Fier.
Here.
And Scott Palava.
Here.
Okay, tonight's agenda goes through 10 K. In addition, deletions or corrections to the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion, my councilman Palava.
Second.
My councilperson Fier. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes. Consider approval of the minutes from the February 23rd, 2023, regular meeting. In addition, deletions or corrections to the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion, my councilman Kadada.
Second.
Second, my councilman Webb. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No public hearings. On to presentation of citizen petitions and comments. Comments limited to two minutes. So if you're not on the agenda, now is your opportunity to speak. Okay. This number of items on the consent agenda tonight. The monthly bills, the treasures report, board and commission minutes. Consider approval of a quote in the amount of $19,292.50 submitted by Bushell Enterprises for hauling and applying biosolids. Consider acknowledging a Minnesota law for gambling LG 240B application to conduct excluded bingo submitted by the Sons of the American Legion Squadron 586. Consider approval of an application and permit for a one to four day temporary on sale liquor license requested by the Lonzo Fireman's Relief Association. Consider approval to schedule a public hearing on Thursday, April 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM or shortly thereafter regarding the city's 2023 Small Cities Development Program application. Consider approval of application for payment number one in the amount of $31,404.37 to Blum for police facility auto slash video equipment and installation. Consider approval of application for payment number two in the amount of $4,559.22 to Blum for the police facility auto video. Consider approval of the city's 2023 Muscure Control Management Services, RFP. Consider approval of a sewer rate adjustment to the property located at 414 Fourth Avenue Northeast. Would anybody like any of those items pulled for discussion?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Motion, my councilman Palava.
Second.
Second, my councilperson Fier. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of a West Central Sanitation Good Neighbor Recycling Team Check to the Knights of Columbus, number 16225, for recycling 36.11 tons of cardboard slash mixed paper. Mike Rhodes, West Central Sanitation. Welcome, gentlemen.
This is, uh, I thought I'd introduce, uh...
Sure.
Mike Rhodes here is our new site manager for Mankato.
Okay.
At the same time, so he'll be down in Mankato overseeing the site down here. So he'll be in Lonzdale and some of that area, so.
Okay.
Wanted to introduce him at the same time as we presented this check to you guys as well.
Great.
And I hope everything's going well. We're almost through winter, a couple more.
Hopefully a couple more days.
Hopefully more something.
Are the Knights of Columbus here or not?
No.
They are not.
Okay. But anyway, still a terrific program.
Yeah.
Maybe you can talk a little bit if you like.
I'll just...
Might as well get the hang of it, right?
Not sure what to do in here, but, uh, no, I look forward to working with you guys. Um, four weeks on the job today, so, or this week, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions, comments? Feel free to let me know.
Yeah. It's really a terrific program. I know sometimes you get some debris and, and, you know, stuff that probably shouldn't be in there, but I know the organizations really appreciate the generosity and, and how much? And the check was for?
$541.
$541.65?
Yep.
Great. Well, I'm sure the Knights of Columbus will put it to good use.
I'm sure they will. I'm glad to help out and, uh, I'd be part of the community and the opportunity to help serve, uh, citizens of Lonzdale as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything, any comments for us or anything like that? Just let us know.
No, yeah, I think you don't, you know, usually hear just bad news when...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's usually how it goes in garbage.
No news is good news, right? Yeah.
That's the case, you know?
No, I think everybody's pretty well satisfied from what I've heard.
Good, good, good to hear.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Perfect.
Okay, are we expecting Paul Donner? Shall we?
Uh, he just texted me. He's running a couple of minutes late, so.
So we'll come back to him?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll go to consider approval of requests submitted by the Lonzo Area Chamber of Commerce pertaining to Community Day 2023. Shannon Gutsy Cupp, LACC Executive Director. Welcome.
Why, thank you.
The best director ever, by the way.
Who do you change?
I know, we don't like change here.
This is my good side.
So you're the one that requests it.
Every question. I'm good. Thank you for having me, council members and mayor. I just wanted to get approval for Community Day for August 12th, 2023. Um, in your packet, I included a cover letter, permit for one to four day liquor license, permits and requests for road closures, a very fluid LCD event schedule, business courtesy letter, resident courtesy letter, and the TNC quote. Nothing else really has changed significantly other than Joel mentioned County Road Four being closed. So we kind of put together a request to have the detour for that day move from 80th Street to South Main to Florida and then go up to Industrial, obviously to 19. We would open that back up on Saturday after the car cruise rolls off at seven, six o'clock they roll off, so by seven o'clock we could have that back open. We usually open all of South Main. So that's...
Yeah, that's a bigger deal.
Right? Did you have anything else for the road?
Um, no, I just received an email from the county engineer after, um, sent it off that they would, you know, be willing to work with us on, you know, for that 12 hours basically on Saturday.
Anybody events this year? Any rah rah?
Um, not, we're still working on it, obviously. We will be having a pet contest, um, which will be kind of fun. We're going to have that either over behind RR Revival and/or DRS, that grass area kind of by the parking lot. Um, so something new and different, um, just different activities. We haven't come up with the, the rules and regulations yet for that, but working on that for something new, working on, um, bringing a water sport type game. Um, a lot of the companies have closed unfortunately, so we're kind of working on that as well. But other than that, nothing new.
I mean, you're satisfied with last year's turnout, right? It was all good?
It was amazing. Yeah, we've had really good turnout the past, I would say, good five, six years. We've had a really good, really good turnout, so we appreciate you letting us host this and...
You did a great job, really do.
Thank you, it's fun.
Hard to get volunteers, I suppose.
Yes. So if you're open on August 12th? Um, yeah, so always looking for volunteers, but...
That's good, yeah. Well, any concerns with a request anyway?
No, it's pretty much like it has been in the past.
Uh, make a motion to approve the request for Lonzo Community Day.
Motion, my councilman Palava.
Second.
Second, my councilman Kadada. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again for your good work. All right. Presentation of 2022 Lonzo Police Department Annual Report. Jason Schmitz, Chief of Police. Now she only took like four minutes, chief, I'm just saying.
We only have three.
No, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Well, for 2022 was the kind of the year of progress, frustration and patience. The construction of the new police facility continued to move forward at a slow pace due to the supply chain issues in COVID-19. We experienced delays with the precast walls, boilers, pumps, storm doors, and some other things. A project that was supposed to be completed in January of 2022 took much longer than anticipated and was finally completed in August of 2022. We started operations out of the new facility on August 3rd of 2022 with a well-attended ribbit cutting and open house on August 30th. Um, even though the project took much longer than expected, it was well worth the wait as the new facility turned out great. The facility really works well with our operations and will serve the community now and long into the future. It was an honor to be a part of the project and want to thank everyone involved. And then since our old sign with our old address, we had nowhere to put it but in the garage with a kind of a nice little symbol to remember, you know, where we were at and for now and into the future, so. So that currently hangs in the PD garage. We also replaced two squad cars in 2022. One was scheduled for replacement and the other was unfortunately totaled in a crash. Fortunately, no one was injured and the suspect was later apprehended and believed he is back in prison. For some reason, trying to get a squad car became a struggle for us and other agencies across the state. The car that was ordered was canceled, which left me scrambling to find two squad cars. Fortunately, Garden Fleet Safety, which does our equip, equipment installation, orders several extra vehicles each year for those agencies that find themselves in the same predicament. They were able to provide us with two vehicles at the state contract bid and get them equipped. And then in May, we hired Cody Bretherton as a full-time police officer after the resignation of Officer Luke Morris back in October of 2021. The community and I are very fortunate to have such a great team of officers and staff to provide 24/7 police coverage given the current law enforcement environment. Currently, there are approximately 150 open law enforcement positions across the state. The officers and staff that serve the community of Lonzdale are myself, Officer Todd Franklin with 21 years, Officer David Oring with 16 years, Officer Jack Schlecker with eight years, Officer John Thieling with five years, Officer Cody Bretherton with nine months, part-time Officer John Pashew with two years, part-time Officer Cody Brody Cupp with one year of service, and records receptionist Candace Parkos with 17 years. In July, I was tasked with locating a vendor to equip several parks with cameras due to ongoing vandalism and damage to property. We had major damage to one of the dugout, dugouts at our DRS field after several juveniles set several tires on fire inside the dugout. Thanks to a couple of community members who witnessed the juveniles running from the scene that led us to the arrest and criminal charges of the three juveniles. The Vakata camera system was, has really worked well. Uh, the officers are able to view live or prior recordings from any camera remotely. Uh, the quality is easy to use and, uh, the system also works great. Since installation, we have had, haven't had any issues at any of the parks. And typically, we always have issues at the warming house, at Trichka, and this year, nothing.
Nice.
So...
Nice.
Yeah. Uh, community policing. Officers with the Lonzo Police Department participated in several community events throughout 2022. These events provide a great opportunity for officers to meet and interact with people in the community and discuss any concerns they may have. Some of the events that we participated in are Night to Unite, Community Days, Cub Scout Tours, Frosty Fest, Vehicle Fair, Public Safety Presentations, and Lonzdale Meals on Wheels. So I had several officers volunteered to deliver meals this year, so.
Oh, nice.
Training. Each year, officers with the Lonzo Police Department spend hours on training and continuing education to meet the Minnesota Standard Peace Officers Training requirements. For 2022, the department had approximately 485 hours of training. Some of the training officers attended were Crisis Intervention, Hostile Event Response, FEMA Incident Command System, Use of Force Firearms, and Emergency Medical Response. Our medical disposal box, or take it to the box, has disposed 223 pounds of medication since being installed in August of 2019. For 2022, we disposed a total of 43 pounds, which is down from the previous year. Our biggest customer, Villages of Lonzdale, were able to start disposing of their own unused medication. So I encourage everyone to dispose unused medication at our disposal site. This takes away the temptation teens may have where that accidental ingestion from a child and flushing it in the system is not good for the water. So for the Lonzo Police Department, had a total of 3,784 incidences for 2022, an increase of 11% from 2021. And below is a chart that kind of indicates the total number of incidences we've had for the previous three years. And later, it'll kind of show where that 11% comes from. Crimes against persons' property, uh, theft from vehicle, we had a slight increase overall. Theft was down, burglary was down, property damage vandalism was down by half, and I think part of that is due to the, uh, new camera system at the parks. Uh, assaults, we had a slight increase, uh, criminal sexual assaults, really no change, and then domestics, uh, down by half, so everyone must have been getting along. Uh, for traffic incidences, um, that makes up part of that increase, that 11% increase because we had a roughly little over 200 more traffic stops from the prior year. Uh, our DWI arrests, we had no change from 2021. Citations did increase a little bit, and then our motor vehicle accidents actually decreased from the prior year. And then other incidences that we deal with on a regular basis, animal calls, a slight increase. We also had a slight increase with medicals. Ordinance enforcement was up, um, and then check parks was up, and that's kind of makes that, uh, makes up to that 11% with, I think, a little over 250 more calls from the prior year. And then suspicious activity was up a little bit. And then in closing, I want to thank the officers and staff of the Lonzo Police Department for their support and commitment to public safety. Uh, we all enjoy working for the city and cherish the relationship we have in the community. Um, second, the support we receive from the mayor, council, and other city staff's show you care for the safety and well-being of the community and officers. And last, the support and commitment to public safety the community and businesses show is just amazing. And then after that is just kind of a few charts that show you, um, incidences by the, by the hour, what time of day we seem to have the most incidences, and then, uh, date per week that we have the most incidences, and then just basically the total incidences from 2022 and 2021. So with that, if you have any questions?
That's, uh, that's some really good information. You put a lot of, a lot of work into the, to the report there. It's really good. Lot of years of service for you and Todd and David and some of the guys there. That's, that says a lot too, of course.
No, it does say a lot, and I'm really glad I have the staff I do. You know, just from what I hear from other agencies, you know, not able to find officers. I think there's a news story a couple of weeks ago. There's a metro department at full staff, they're at 31. I think they have 12 officers total.
Right.
So it's just, it's, it's a struggle, and it's not Minnesota, it's across the country, so.
Yeah. I, I think you touched on it ahead, you know, our community supports the police. I think that's, you see that as the difference, you know, overall.
Yep.
I'll talk pretty highly of our police department, that's for sure.
No, and we appreciate it.
Are you all settled in now?
For the most part, yeah. Still working out little bugs here and there, but not living out of boxes anymore.
Have you been able to, I, I know I talked to Candace at one time, that, um, you were looking for maybe some toys or things to have in, in some of the rooms that when you would have people commit to occupy kids when you...
Yep.
If you had people coming in with issue with, that need their service. Did you find stuff or are you still in need?
We're still in need.
Okay. I'll touch base with her then and see what age range you're looking for or...
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll be, appreciate it.
Okay.
Otherwise, thank you very much, sir. Excellent report.
Very good report.
Thank you very much.
Well, we can either have Paul Donner wait till the end, or we could have him do it now. No, come on up, Paul, here. Consider approval of Resolution 2023-11, Resolution Ratifying Sale Prescribing the Form and Details of Providing the Payment of $340,000 General Obligation Equipment Certificates of Endedness, Series 2023A. Mr. Donner?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. I believe in your packet is the, the numbers, the, the, um, there you go. I see it being scrolled down by Councilman Palava. What I'll do is I'll go through, I'll, I'm not going to go through every one of those pages, but I'll, um, highlight the information in there and certainly answer any questions you've got. So the resolution before you, as, Mr. Mayor, you indicated, would be to award, uh, the issuance of bonds for the equipment certificates, which are going to fund, I believe there's three capital equipment purchases that you're, you're making here later this spring. And so these proceeds will, uh, fund those purchases. What we did, um, as we've done in the past with issues similar to this, um, rather than go out onto the public market and incur the costs associated with that, um, we decided to go and solicit proposals from area banks, um, and then we judged those proposals against what you could have received in the public market. We solicited, um, the two local banks in town, um, Francine and First National Bank, as well as Bremer Bank. Bremer Bank, for whatever reason, decided not to submit a proposal this time, but we did receive proposals from First National and from Francine. And the, the best proposal we received was from First National Bank, and that was for a fixed interest rate of three and a half percent. And so what I'll do is I'll go through the first few pages that are in your packet there on your screen. The first page, page one, is the sources and uses of funds, and it, it spells out, uh, $340,000 is what we're borrowing. And the city will contribute about $9,500, and that will be used to make the first interest payment next year because we won't, we will not have collected taxes to make that payment yet, so you'll front that payment next spring. Um, you, of that 340, 327,500 will be used to make the acquisition for the equipment, and there's your interest payment of 9520. And then, um, we've got financing costs, closing costs that are incurred there of 12.5. The next page then shows how that $340,000 will be repaid, and we are required to pay it back within 10 years by state statute. And you can see that the final interest payment is February 1st of 2033. And you can see on the, uh, probably the third column from the right, uh, you'll see the annual payments there averaging about $44,000 after you make that first interest payment next year. And that's based on the interest rate that's fixed at three and a half percent. And with all of your issuances, we include, um, a prepayment feature for you that in the event you would like to pay the, the bonds off early or refinance them, uh, because of better interest rates in the future, we'll have that, you have that flexibility beginning on February 1st of 2028. So halfway through, you'll have the option to pay them off early or refinance them at a lower rate. So, pretty simple, straightforward. You've pledged the property taxes of the entire city to make that payment. That's what allows you to get the lowest rate possible for you, so. Any questions on the, the issuance? No? Okay. With, um, approval tonight, the closing will be set for April 13th, and the money will be probably just transferred from one account at the bank to another.
Any comments from staff? All good on your end?
Oh, everything's good. It's nice to be able to stay local.
Yes.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate both the banks' participation.
Right. Okay, anybody else?
Uh, make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-11.
Motion, my councilman Palava.
Second.
Second, my councilman Webb. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for efforts. Consider approval of application for payment number eight, the final, in the amount of $68,907.16 to BCM Construction for the 2021 Street and Utility Improvement Project. Bonnie Bison, City Engineer.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to try and talk loud since it's, it's providing some feedback. So, um, this project was constructed in 2021. It included Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue Southwest from Colorado Street to the south. Uh, the streets were reconstructed, Water Main and services were, uh, replaced, including curb stops, and then there were sanitary sewer repairs, um, and some additional storm sewer drain tile work as well. So again, the construction occurred in 2021. The final lift of payment was placed in 2022, and then all the punch list items have been completed. The contractor just recently provided all the final closing documents that are required, which includes the two-year maintenance bond. And so that bond will extend from tonight, if the council approves the, um, final payment, to March 30th, 2025. And during that time, staff will perform the, um, warranty inspections to, uh, make sure everything's been addressed during that warranty period. Um, and so the recommendation is to release the remaining reteinage in that amount of And just note that the, the total contract amount was about 1.378 million, which was about 10% less than the original contract amount, and that was just due to less, um, quantities needed or, or work for excavation and driveway work and restoration and things like that. So all the paperwork is in order, um, and staff would recommend to approve the final payment to BCM Construction in the amount of $68,907.16.
There's no outstanding punch list items or anything? Everything is all taken care of?
Correct.
And we'll be approving application for payment, uh, number eight, in the amount of $68,907.16 to BCM Construction.
Second.
Motion, my councilman Kadada. Second, my councilman Webb. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consider approval of a quote submitted by Minnesota Pump Works in the amount of $82,476.60 for lift station pump and piping. Mr. Dorfeld?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Annual maintenance at Lift Station Two revealed an issue with one of the base elbows. Initially, it was thought the base elbow was broken. Upon further investigation, it revealed the base elbow is not broken but severely worn. This wear is causing the pump to not sit correctly on the base elbow, causing sewage to flow by the pipe that leads to the treatment plant. Uh, during this annual maintenance, staff was advised to replace pump two in the lift station. It is a flight pump that was installed in 2002. The industry standard life expectancy for pumps of this capacity is 20 years. Because of motor failure, pump number one was replaced in 2020 for a cost of $32,870. Uh, with lead time on a new pump being eight to 22 weeks, it is staff's recommendation to be proactive and order a new pump to avoid any circumstance that would leave the only lift station operating on one pump instead of two. Purchasing a new pump now will save the inevitable, inevitable annual cost increase. The pump is currently working, but it has exceeded its life expectancy. Replacement of the pump is not a matter of if, but when. Purchasing and installing a new pump would also allow us to use our old pump as an emergency backup. To replace the base elbow and vertical piping, the lift station must be taken offline and bypassed. The bypass process is expensive and requires a separate contractor to be hired. Because of the significant expense of the bypass and the fact that both, both base elbows and vertical piping are the same age, staff is recommending that both base elbows and vertical piping be replaced at this time. Staff recommends hiring Goliath Hydro Vac for the bypass of lift station number two. They will have multiple vac and tanker trucks to haul wastewater to the treatment plant. Staff will, staff contacted many contractors that provide this service, but had little success finding any that were willing to handle this bypass. Bushell Enterprises, uh, the contractor that hauls our... Bushel Enterprises, uh, the contractor that hauls our bio salads, was contacted for this bypass. He has pumping equipment that will fit into a sanitary sewer manhole, loaded into trucks and haul it to the treatment plant, uh, but this process will require city staff to use our jetback truck to clear the lift station of all wastewater that is in the station. Pumping out of a one single manhole creates a risk that the pump will not keep up to the flow demands. Goliath Hydro Vac would handle one hundred percent of the bypass duties with very low risk of an overflow. Bids were received from the following companies for the lift station equipment. Minnesota Pump Works, eighty-two thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty cents. Electric Pump, one oh seven nine thirty-eight. And Quality Flow, one hundred twenty-five thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars. All three of these companies that submitted bids for the lift station equipment highly recommend Goliath Hydro Vac for the bypass. Both Minnesota Pump Works and Goliath Hydro Vac are confident this job can be completed in two days at a rate of eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars per day. This will bring the total of seventeen thousand one hundred dollars for the bypass should it take two days. Lift station was constructed in two thousand one, and the base elbows and piping have exceeded their life expectancy. Staff recommends hiring Minnesota Pump Works for the installation of two new base elbows, vertical piping, and a new pump. Staff also recommends hiring Goliath, Goliath Hydro Vac for the bypassing of lift station number two. The fiscal impact of this job is the replacement of the base elbows, piping and pump is not a budgeted expense, nor is the bypass, because this was an unknown condition at that time. The claim was filed with our insurance and ultimately denied because the base elbow is worn and not broken. The expense of repairing the lift station will be taken out of the sewer fund. Uh, we have an alternative where we could purchase a new pump and put new brackets on the pump with the hope that it will seal better with the worn base elbow. Uh, this would allow some time for us to budget, um, money for the replacement of the base elbows and vertical piping. This is not a long-term repair and is delaying the inevitable. Uh, this option is thirty-four thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Attached are quotes from Minnesota Pump Works and Goliath Hydro Vac. Staff is recommending a motion to approve a quote from Minnesota Pump Works to install new equipment in lift station two in the amount of eighty-two thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty cents, and a quote from Goliath Hydro Vac in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred dollars for bypassing of lift station two. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
How much of the city is affected by lift station two?
One hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
That's the only one that's functioning.
It's the only one.
Okay.
Even, even up by the wastewater treatment plant, uh, the business is up there, the way the sewer is routed, it kind of sneaks between the treatment plant and the dog park down to Willow Creek to get around to the lift station.
Do you think it would be, uh, I don't know if it's necessary to, if this was to move forward, to put a, um, request to the citizens to limit usage during that time? Uh, or is it, you, you don't think that would be necessary?
Goliath is very confident, um, they have the equipment to handle cities much larger, larger than ours. You know, when I was analyzing it with having Bushel and using our jetback truck, you know, we just, we just can't avoid a malfunction on that truck, then we'd be in big trouble. All our flows are calculated, uh, they're averaged out, they have years and years of data, and Goliath is, is very confident.
I think this is one of those times where it's, it's like when you buy a car, you just start getting it paid for, and the things start going wrong, you know? But this, you know, the, this is the main piece of infrastr- infrastructure in town. We do need to keep it up, and I, you know, I would totally support you doing this, and I appreciate you knowing what your limitations are with our equipment. You guys do an awesome job, and you try everything, and, and sometimes this is just beyond what you can do, and, and this is probably one of those cases.
It is.
And we need to get the, you know, the ones who do it every day.
The, the consequences are just too large.
Right.
And I think to try the, the cheaper fix of the thirty-five thousand or whatever, I think that this could, uh, end on their own a year.
If you didn't have a way to, you know, if you didn't have a way to pay for it now, I'd, I would say yes, but, uh, we have the funds for it. That's, that's why we have that, that's why we carry the fund.
Yep.
Right, all good comments.
And make a motion to approve a quote submitted by Minnesota Pump Works in the amount of eighty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty cents.
Motion, my Councilman Carrada.
Second.
Second, my Councilman Palava, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Do we need a second for this?
Yeah, yeah.
So moved for the seventeen thousand?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Consider approval of a quote submitted by Goliath Hydro Vac incorporating an amount of seventeen thousand one hundred dollars for lift station repairs. Okay, motion, my Councilman Person Fuhr.
Second.
Second, my Councilman Palava, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And when do you expect this work to take place? Any ideas? Need to know when the pump comes in, I suppose, huh?
It, it all, it mostly depends on, on the pump, and then it's just coordinated with Goliath, which we're hoping, we're hoping for eight weeks rather than twenty-two.
Right. Right. Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Consider approval of Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-twelve, a resolution accepting a bid for a forty-by-one-hundred public works storage facility and authorizing a down payment. Mr. Dorfeld.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In discussions during the twenty-twenty-three budget meetings, uh, staff proposed a cold storage building to protect city equipment and eliminate light at the city maintenance building. At the last council meeting, permission was granted to advertise for bids for the building. Pricing has been received, and staff is recommending hiring Worldwide Steel Buildings to supply the building materials. Worldwide Steel Buildings is a building supplier located in Plymouth, Minnesota, and carries a strong reputation for quality and customer satisfaction. Included, included in the quotes are many options for each building, the cost of each building based on the base bid, our Worldwide Steel Buildings, fifty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-four, Titan, sixty-six thousand four hundred and sixty, Ram, one hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred seventeen dollars, Lester, one hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars, Cleary, one hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars. Public Works Property is Zoned P F, which is Public Facilities in Government, which does not include design requirements like that of the I-two zoning districts. Surrounding properties, onso packaging, et cetera, are zoned I-two and require design standards such as block and brick. Metal buildings will be considered, but need additional design materials such as Wayne's Code, et cetera. Based on complying with those standards, the cost of each building would be worldwide, sixty-seven thousand four hundred thirty, Titan, seventy thousand seven hundred fifty-five, Ram, one hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred seventeen, Lester, one hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-three, and Cleary at one hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars. The following bids include compliance with the I-two zoning districts and insulating the building, uh, worldwide at seventy-six thousand six hundred thirty-nine, Titan, seventy-eight thousand one hundred and, one hundred and ninety-five, Ram, one hundred eighty-one seventy-seven, Lester, one hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-three, and Cleary, one hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars. Uh, Lester and Cleary both did not submit pricing for insulation. In addition to the building, engineering items, site work, a concrete floor, electrical, windows and doors need to be accounted for, which increases the cost of each building to worldwide, two hundred forty-six thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars, Titan, two hundred forty-six thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. This quote was submitted with Wayne's Code on the front of the building only. All the others were all the way around. Ram, two hundred eighty-one thousand seventy-seven, Lester, two hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred twenty-two, Cleary, two hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-three. Staff has carefully analyzed these options to create the best building for our needs and factoring in longevity. Staff recommends the following. Worldwide Steel Buildings, seventy-six thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars. This includes building materials, Wayne's Code on the entire building, and insulation on the walls and ceiling. Insulation paired with heat would allow us to store equipment such as the jetter, the sweeper, pumps, generators, et cetera, with no need to winterize them. With a new single axle plow truck arriving this fall, this would maximize our building space to allow items that need to be winterized to be stored in this new building. All builders that submitted bids advise the city that gutters would be less expensive if we hired a gutter contractor ourselves. Staff has verified, uh, that gutters are approximately half price if we hired a private contractor. To begin the process of ordering this building, Worldwide Steel Buildings requires a down payment of twenty-one thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents, which is twenty-eight percent of the seventy-six thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The fiscal impact, uh, this was discussed during the two thousand twenty-three budget process, thirty thousand was budgeted for a debt service payment for this project. Because other projects bid earlier this year came in under budgeted amounts, there's two hundred and sixteen thousand available in the two thousand twenty-three budget that could be used for this project. The breakdown is as follows. The cold storage building debt, budgeted amount was thirty thousand dollars, there are no bid incidentals, so the balance is thirty thousand. Equipment certificates, budgeted thirty thousand, there's a bid incidental of ten thousand to leave a balance of twenty thousand. Twenty-two-three tr- trail project, uh, was budgeted for four hundred thousand, bids came in at two hundred and thirty-four thousand, leaving a balance of one hundred and sixty-six. A transfer of a hundred and sixty-six thousand was budgeted from the road and bridge fund. This is not needed for the trail project and can be used for this building project. The two thousand twenty-three millon overlay and parking lots was budgeted at two hundred fifty thousand, um, the bids came in at two hundred and ten thousand, leaving a balance of forty thousand. However, this forty thousand is not including, included in the funding available for this project due to street conditions from this winter. The remaining balance of thirty-one thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars could be funded by the following. We could have a transfer from the liquor fund, or we could internally fund it due to the water waste, the water sewer funds similar to the construction of Longsdale Liquor. We have alternatives of approve the building with different options, approve a bid from a different builder, or do not approve any bids. Um, attached is the Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-twelve bids. I made an Excel spreadsheet kind of separating the options, um, the different choices, and then just a picture of the building example. Staff is requesting a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-twelve. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Um, I think, first of all, just on the, the bids, I don't know if I'm following this, so originally, you know, you got like Worldwide at fifty-six and Titan at sixty-six, and then the other more, um, known contractors are like a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, and when you put your sum total together, you know, you got two forty-six at, uh, two fifty-two, two eighty, and they're all pretty close. So, my, my question, I guess, is which column are we using for the final numbers? Is it two forty-six? Is that what you're saying is the all-in number?
That, that's the all-in number. So, Worldwide and Titan are both red iron steel building builders. The other three would be wood pole sheds. Ram, Lester, and Cleary, those base bids of one thirty-two, one forty-nine, and one fifty-two. Have the four overhead doors and the two service doors and the window included in their base bid. The two steel builders, those are not included. That's why the price is so significantly less.
Okay.
We would have to, so for the two steel building, um, I, that's what, if you can...
No, I, I guess just what I'm after, so the all-in number, is that the two forty-six? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That's, that's really what I'm asking.
Yep.
So, you have Titan and Worldwide basically tied.
Yeah.
Um, your recommendation is for Worldwide?
Yeah, I anticipate that Wayne's Code to be another three thousand dollars if Titan was to add it to the remaining three sides of the building.
Okay. So, the, the two forty-six, six thirty-nine is what you're requesting. Is there any other potential, uh, incidentals or things not accounted for, or do you think that's, I mean, is it the floor you want, is it six-inch floor? Is that what you're doing, or a forty-four?
Yeah, it's the six-inch floor. I guess, to be clear, I think tonight, the, I think these total bid packages were to make the council aware of, of the project. Should this resolution pass tonight, this is, this is the direction we're moving forward, and this is the end goal, this is the end price. Tonight, the approval is for the down payment check to get this ball rolling.
I, I understand that, but I guess the point is, who is, who is it going to, and as if it's Worldwide, is that the final number? I guess, we want to know what's the all-in number, the worst-case number. Is it the two forty-six?
That's the two, it's the two forty-six.
Okay. Okay.
And that matches the building style that's up there currently, the red iron building, correct?
The, the building style's the same, the roof pitches are the same. During construction, it, the beam technology has changed, so like we have solid beams, they've got some notches cut out of them for material savings, things like that, and it also strengthens it. But yeah, this, uh, this, this end number is, is the best of my pricing doors, pricing the window, pricing service doors, pricing concrete, electrical.
Do you, do you put in sixteen-foot doors or fourteen?
They're sixteen foot wide and fourteen feet high, they're the same as the doors we have on our current maintenance building.
Right.
And that'll be a separate contract with...
I've got two bids right now for the overhead doors, and they're within a hundred dollars of each other, um, but that thirty thousand is, I have allotted for here in the South Street, covers, covers that, so.
So, the, the doors are in the two forty-six also, is what you're saying?
Yeah, that's why this price jumps so high.
Right.
How they even out so fast.
Right. So, you're just looking at the thirty-one grand for the shortfall, is what the other question is, right?
For the twenty-one? Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
For the thirty-one, six thirty-nine, right? That's what you're short from what you laid out for?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And the, the pole sheds would be non-insulated if they would?
The pole sheds are non-insulated, um, Ram was the only one that provided insulation. That price jumps to the two eighty-one. The way those buildings are insulated, it doesn't require the inside to be finished, but it is strongly recommended because it's, you know, it's just regular pad insulation that's in there.
I, I mean, I, I guess, I think you want a steel building, anytime you can get one.
Absolutely.
I agree. I think the longevity is two to one.
Not only longevity, um, I think an important factor is with the steel building, it allows us to pour the floor open air before the building even arrives on site, like scheduling, everything of that nature, allev- alleviates a lot of stress with these, it, it doesn't matter which builder you pick, you know, they're booked out. So, if the building is in September, you know, a pole building, if we couldn't pour the floor till October, now we're heating that to get the concrete to cure and everything else.
So, you say it's going to be heated building?
Potentially. I mean, the insulation came up really in the, just in conversation, the first bid that was submitted had insulation included in it, and I was, I was rather shocked at how, I don't want to say how cheap it was, but how little it was compared to the insulation expense of a traditional wood over a building.
Right, I guess my question is, why, why would you not put heat in right away?
We, we would want to. That two forty-six number does not have a furnace accounted for it.
Right, and do you just like, use like a modern gassy, do you take a ready heat heater, what are you thinking of?
I would have a, like a Resner ceiling heater, you know? It's forty-five, fifty degrees, just to keep the generating, the pumps, keep the generators plugged in, everything.
Can you do floor drains in all deal?
We had talked about doing some floor drains just to alleviate.
The snow melt.
The snow melt.
I, I guess where I'm headed with this, if we're going to spend a quarter million dollars, you might as well spend another X amount and just make sure it's done the way you want it.
Right.
Maybe still not to have heat and floor drains and all that kind of stuff, you know? You just might as well make it, you know, make it, you know, permanent or whatever you want to term it. So, I, I guess as you put your numbers together, you should factor that, and then, you know, I, I'm sure we'll somewhat come up with a difference, whether it's the sewer fund or the liquor store or whatever, but.
Okay.
But I, I suppose it's hard to commit to that, to, you know, the final number, but...
Right.
The World, the Worldwide here, do they include the, the piers, or is that with the floor? The Worldwide here, do they include the, the piers, or is that with the floor bid?
That would be with the floor bid. Those steel buildings come with the engineer stamped drawing for the foundation appears, so all that is included.
Do you, do you have a reference from Worldwide to Titan? I mean, have you talked to, is there a reference on the companies? Or do you want to check that, or are you, are you good with it?
I've checked into Worldwide, um, their Plymouth. Titan, Titan actually, uh, just, it was just a search, it was just calling all red iron building builders. It's, is it Paul Schozachik? I can't think of what his company is in Craig. He was in the running and he said, I just can't compete, I'm too busy. I don't kind of give the local option.
And I guess my point, just so we got a reputable contractor, that's all I have.
Yes, no, I'm very comfortable with Worldwide, um, Plymouth location testimonies.
Okay.
Came out on site.
On their bid, you have gutters and downspouts. If we were going to do it ourselves, that, that'd be a deduct off of it, off the fifty-six?
No, these prices are all factored in the staff report without gutters on there. All of the contractors that bid.
Okay, oh, it's, it's option, it's just an option.
It's just an option.
Got it, okay.
They put it on there, but all of them said, they, they, they all asked if I knew who Frank Knobak was. Yeah, so.
Yeah, you want, you want to put gutters on eventually.
Yep.
And then what's the inside finished with? Is it tinned on the inside?
No, it's, um, it's just, it's a six mil poly.
Okay.
Sandwiched between the perwens. I think that's where the insulation savings comes from. Because the others are clearly a tin and low insulation in the ceiling.
Okay.
So you, so it's not a finished inside then, is what you're saying?
Not a hundred percent finished, no.
How much you want to, you should price out that tin.
I can price out tin.
You should do that, too.
What, what do you have in, I can't off the top of my head think what you have in the, in the shop now.
It's tin.
It's, okay.
It's a whole different, it's a whole different process, like from a, the pole frame tin to like the metal perwin building, you know, with the metal in there. But it can be done for sure.
Well, I guess my point is, otherwise you just have the poly that doesn't tend to rip and make it.
It can be vulnerable, I'm doing.
That's, that's all I'm after, just it looks like, I mean, I would, I would get a price, you know, if it's not a whole lot, it's just, it's nice to just have a finished building, I mean, I don't know if, you know, if you want.
Well, then to clean it up too, you, because I know you guys have run into times where it's trying to get the diesel exhaust cleaned off the ceiling and stuff. You'd, you'd never be able to wash that, I'll say fabric type product.
Correct.
Right, exactly right. You'll have to use a small, well, every time you start a truck, you know, or anything.
Right.
Yeah, I, I would look at that, too.
Yeah, it's definitely worth pricing it out, that's for sure.
I absolutely can do that.
So do we hold here and have him bring us back a little more information before we approve this?
Is there a sunset date on any of these bids?
We can, well, we meet again in two weeks.
They're all, as far as like the bids expire?
Yeah.
No.
I, I guess what, I mean, if you could, if you could get a final number and just make it back in two weeks, I, I think we're generally all in favor of it. It's just, I, I think you want it as complete as possible. I mean, I agree with Cindy on the, the walls and all that kind of stuff. At least if it's tin, you can wash them or, you know, degrease them or whatever. I'm just talking from the experience of ours.
Or it's durable, too.
Yeah, you should actually, if you go into that trouble, uh, see how much like an exhaust fan is. Even a small exhaust fan would, would help a lot.
So.
But we do have to remember, this was designed to be a storage building, not a general use building. Yeah, we went, we went from a cold storage to a, to a, a secondary workshop.
Right, but my, my point is if you, you can plan to use it for snowplows and that kind of stuff. And I'm just talking from the experiences that I had, I mean, a building without heat this winter, it gets down to zero when they're, I mean, things are frozen. And if, is your intent to pull the snowplows in there?
The intent would be, the snowplows, everything that would be dispatched for snow plowing would be in our current maintenance building. When the season's flip, the equipment flips. The jetter, the sweeper, the pumps, and the generator would all be able to be in that other building, out of our way. You know, we have another plow truck. The reason why I want to be able to switch is I just, I had a meeting with Safesure, and the price of this building could go up very quick if OSHA walks in and considers it a place of work instead of a place of storage. That's when the ventilation comes in, that's when the fire suppression comes in, and it's just on and on and on. So, you know, just keeping budget in mind, kind of hitting that happy medium of storage, not place of work.
I mean, I could just tell you from experience what's going to happen here. I mean, you buy another truck, and then your shop is full, and you want to work in the other shop, and how we, you know, I mean, just, you know, that, just that's what happens, you know.
The current shop is twenty-five years old, isn't it? It was.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay, oh, so almost, okay. This lasted us this long, and we're really, you know, we're bursting at the seams. We, I think we need to take our time and do it, do it right this time, because we may not build another shop for maybe twenty-five more years, you never know.
Right.
So that, you know, we could pump the brakes a little bit.
It's definitely worth the pricing, you know, checking out.
Yes.
Yeah, and maybe you go back and just, it is just a storage building, you alleviate all that, but, I mean, my, my point is if you're within, you know, twenty grand of having a finished building with heat and vent, you know.
Before you move in, because then you're probably not going to do it.
Right, but if it's a big number, if it's fifty grand or a hundred grand, well, then, let's go back to the basic storage building and, you know. At least, that's how I see it.
I, and I do think the red iron building is the way to go. They've gotten a lot more competitive in the last five years.
So do, do you want to do anything tonight? Do you want to come back in two weeks with the final number, or what do you, what do you think?
Look in two weeks.
Because we want to know what, we want to know what the tinted inside number.
So I'll get it, I'll get pricing on finishing the inside with tin. I, by then, I should have pricing on what a heater would cost. And then a ventilation system.
Right. It doesn't have to be elaborate, but just some type of exhaust fan, I mean, even on our small shop that I just, you know, you hit the switch, and at least it takes out the exhaust when you start a truck there, it runs for five minutes or whatever. Otherwise, the walls all turn black in a hurry, you know.
Oh, yeah, ours, ours do.
Right, I can just check, but like I say, if it's a big deal, you know, we don't have to do it, at least we know what we're talking about, you know.
Yeah, I, I, you know, two weeks isn't going to push this project back.
Right.
So I can absolutely get those prices for you guys.
Perfect. Suppose you should have, you want to motion the table?
Sure.
Motion my counsel, my palaver?
Second.
My counsel person here. Uh, to table this resolution for two weeks, or to the next council meeting, rather, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion curious. Consider approval of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, a resolution approving conditional use permit twenty twenty-three dash oh one. Ms. Sheffer, community development planner.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, before you tonight is, um, a recommendation from the Planning Commission. So review and approval or denial of a land use application submitted for a conditional use permit for a commercial, no, commercial car wash as a conditional use in the Rolling Ridge Marketplace PUD. Um, with us is the applicant tonight, Jake Wetzel, and our attorney Joel Javnik is here as well. Um, so I'm going to go through the staff report, and then the applicant has requested to speak tonight as well.
Okay.
Um, the location of the subject property is at the current, um, bank building at seven oh one Ash Street Northeast. It's currently one parcel. Um, as part of the initial land use application, we also received a proposed plat changing, um, from fifth addition to sixth addition with the creation of three lots. Um, the proposed location of the car wash would be on lot three of that proposed plat, um, totaling one point three one acres. The plat and site plan were tabled, so that's not before you tonight, just the conditional use permit. Um, the owner of the property currently is First National Bank, and I already stated who the applicant was. The architect is HTG Architects and Engineers Anderson Engineering of Minnesota. So the request is for a five thousand five hundred and seventy-six square foot commercial building, and it's in the Rolling Ridge Marketplace Planned Unit Development Zoning District, which has a base zoning of B two. Um, so the Planning Commission meant to consider this request on March twentieth, and they tabled the review of the site plan and preliminary plat due to a condition that they're recommending with the conditional use permit that would change the location of the car wash. The Planning Commission's staff report is attached, and it worked to address the neighborhood concerns related to sight and sound, um, and working with the applicant on their chosen location, and I can review that staff report in further detail if you wish. Um, in consultation with the city attorney, um, based on the proposed condition to move the setback from residential property from fifty feet to two hundred feet, um, the city attorney believes that would be fine for the city to do. Um, the record was, um, one of the comments he had made was the record was sufficiently made that the amendment authorizing the use within the PUD was somewhat predicated on the understanding of the possible location being near to the bank. Um, the applicant did submit a response letter, which was included with your packet, and I'll let him go over his response when he speaks. And today, we also received a response from the property owner, First National Bank, uh, which was distributed to you via email. Also included in the packet is past meeting, meeting minutes from November, um, where there's a record of concerns from counselors regarding that location. So we put together a couple of options. Um, option one is approval, um, at the applicant's proposed location as part of their application. So that's attached as permit draft number one. Option two is approval based on Planning Commission recommendation with the two hundred foot setback from neighboring residential property, which would then remove some of those proposed conditions with the berm and the fence on the south and the west. And that would also add new conditions related to the revised site plan and plat submissions and proof of ownership that would be necessary for the new permit. Um, option three would be denial. So at the March twentieth, meaning the Planning Commission recommended option two, and we also um, started a discussion about hours of operation as well, so that's, um, suggested to be talked about tonight as well. If option one or two is chosen, either way, we need to go back through Planning Commission with the site plan and the plat since that was tabled. So that will come back to you as well. Um, the applicant has not withdrawn or amended the application at this time. So the attachments would be the Planning Commission staff report, the applicant response letter, the minutes, the two draft, um, permits, and we also have provided the original concept plans and the letter from First National Bank. If you want more information, I can go through the Planning Commission staff report, answer any questions you have, or we can turn it over to the applicant.
Okay, applicant, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So, start off here, you know, I just want to say, I'm committed to doing business in Lonsdale. I want to be here. I'm a young entrepreneur who wants to bring business to town, particularly in an area that's been less than fifty percent capacity the last seventeen years. I have, I have some important comments on this project that I want to speak to. So the city approved commercial car washes as a conditional use in the PUD district. This amendment allows car washes as a conditional use on any parcel within that development. The attorney's comment in the staff report references a vague assumption on where it would be located, but this was never memorialized. There's no map to illustrate the location as part of the, as part of the PUD. It's not reflected in the ordinance language. The staff report references council minutes of one member speaking to a setback, but no motion was made at the council. It's a reflection of one voice. For this reason, you can't be site selective nor requiring me to move my project to a different parcel. There's no language in the PUD ordinance that directs site selection or a map illustrating different uses. The two hundred foot condition recommended at the Planning Commission is an unjustified reaction to my site plan, one that lacks fact and justification. The way the proposed site sits, the west side, the west side side yard setback is over twice the required amount per the PUD requirement, fifty feet versus a hundred and four feet. CUP conditions must relate back to the zoning ordinance. No zoning district in the city requires a two hundred foot setback. Neighborhood opposition alone isn't enough to deny a conditional use permit. A two hundred foot setback has to be justified. Last week, at the Planning Commission, when I asked how the two hundred foot setback was determined, the response was, it pushes you to the next lot. There is no justification with that statement. If you impose this two hundred foot setback condition, it makes this lot unbuildable, which is an example of unreasonable. This is an attempt to deny the project. So throughout this process, I've held a neighborhood meeting at the bank to gather feedback, which was recommended by the council. I have a design consideration, considerations that exceed the minimum standards set forth in the PUD ordinance. I have included various mitigation measures on top of the a hundred and four foot setback to appease neighbor requests. For example, I hired a third party to do a stout, a sound study to show how sound travels in this area, which was not required. I have also increased pervious surface, added length to the building for the enclosed dryer system, moved the building further to the east side of the property along with the vacuum stations. I've added a five foot tall berm stretching approximately two hundred feet in length with landscape units on the west side of the building, a six foot fence for screening on the west side of the exit driveway. Regarding the city attorney's comments in the staff report, city attorney mentions an increased setback being reasonable. I am offering a reasonable setback of a hundred and four feet from residential property line, which is twice the zoning ordinance, and no other district has this far of a setback. In the attorney's opinion stated in the staff report, there's no mention of a two hundred foot setback. It was only mentioned that an increased setback is warranted. The council minutes from last November mentioned council member Kadada's opinion on a setback, which never stated a distance. This was not included in the motion. The zoning ordinance should have reflected a decision that uses, that uses can only be allowed in certain areas. The comment by the attorney of, quote, authorizing the use within that particular PUD was predicated somewhat on the understanding, end quote, should have been more accurately, accurately written into the zoning ordinance. Be mindful of the precedent, precedence that this condition is setting in the city of Lonsdale. As far as the zoning ordinance, no district requires a hundred foot setback. Again, this appears to be a strategy or play to move this project to the lot, to the next lot that isn't justified in code. So in conclusion, I'm offering to exceed the Planned Unit Development Ordinance to mitigate the concerns of the Planning Commission and the council and neighborhood. Through the ways that I have already shared, I have also, I have included various measures to show that I care and see value in exceeding these requirements. It's the tipping point to unreasonable that isn't consistent with your city code and unjustifiable to me. That's all I got, so, any questions?
I think, do you, somebody want to summarize, is you or Jamie summarize the planning zoning hearing?
The public hearing?
Yeah, the, the last planning zoning meeting, where it was denied, from what I understand.
It was approved conditional on the addition of the two hundred foot setback.
Okay.
Um, the council can still approve it as it was applied for. The, at the public hearing, there wasn't anyone there to speak, um, and we did not receive any written comments prior to the public hearing by the deadline.
You go back to the, um, allowing and the conditional use, um, at the November meeting. I had asked at least three to four times when we can put the setback on it, and I was told at that meeting that it is not at that meeting. It comes on with your conditions when you apply for your site, is what I was told, or it would have been put on that night. The, the site to the east is what was at the neighborhood bank meeting. That's what was provided there, so that's what the neighborhood residents saw. That November meeting was the site to the east.
It had both in there, it's in the. It's in the minutes.
This is what we had talked about, and having a screen building to the west. The developer has also said this to me at least three times in different conversations.
So that was all options at those times? And, and there was a, a east concept plan and a west concept plan? But then, if you remember back in November, I came with despoil readings. And that noise is virtually none, especially if I'm gonna make the building longer, keep the doors down.
I think it's a very good idea.
At that, at that point, to me in the bank, it was, no one said location, no, noise isn't a factor. The location shouldn't matter anymore, especially if we put berm on the, because that was discussed too. If you use, I, I remember council or one of the meetings that somebody was saying, you know, if you use the west concept plan, you're gonna have to put a berm, you're gonna have to put a fence, you have to put landscape units. So that was still an option. It wasn't ruled out. And no direction was given. If, if I was given a direction, I would have went with that one, you know? Just like I was given the direction that I gotta make the building bigger. So I did. I came to you guys with a bigger building.
Right. I think the biggest kind of hiccup is that twelve foot exiting road and then a fence on the side of that. That's us ramming it right down into that.
It's a sixteen foot exit road.
Sixteen foot. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's still plenty tight to have trucks and trailers pulled through there.
So all this traffic is headed towards the residence?
Yes.
On Ring Road, right?
Yep, back around to Ash Street.
And how can, how can we just don't, don't back on the main drag here? Like, like the other car washes do?
We want to make use of that ring road. And then, I, I guess I don't know how you'd get back to that drag without, you know, a truck and a trailer backing up, just flow, you know? It'd be nice to utilize that ring road and make it a little bit bigger, so it's not so congested.
I think that would become problematic, that ring road, with the headlights always being.
So that, so on this, on the plans, the, there's a fence that's proposed on the plans, shown on the civil plans, it's six foot high, hundred percent screening for two hundred and twenty-five feet.
And where is that? I mean, how would that, we'd have to take the trees out?
No, put it right behind the curb.
I mean, the traffic flow on the east side works completely a hundred percent contained to that site. You know, it, it just, to me, it makes the most sense. Everything is contained to that site. You know, there'd be very, the, the doors closed would be basically your only limitation that you'd need for a conditional use on that site. To me, that makes the most sense.
For the bank and, for the bank wanting to develop their property, they, they like that idea for a, a separate retail, as they noted in the letter, I believe, they sent out today. And, I mean, ultimately, the flow is better on the west lot than it would be to turn.
I don't agree with that at all.
I, I, I don't either. I mean, it's the impacts to the residents. You know, if you look at the other car wash, or any of the police station, or any place, I mean, they stay within their property, they go back onto the main road. They're not impacting, you know, the other, other residents.
You're exiting, you're exiting headlights on, on the south. I know there's proposed a four foot fence on the west side that still spills over into those residents across the street. So every time you come out of there, that will be flashing into their, their houses. Where on the east side, that goes against the lumberyards sheds.
How is that any different from another building that might be proposed in that location at some, some time?
Across that bridge, we'll get to it.
Well, then, that's, yeah, another building not necessarily goes into the ring road.
Right.
Just like Snap or...
But it could be like the bank, where the bank goes towards Highway nineteen. It could be a property just like that.
We're not opposed to going towards nineteen, but going on the east lot to where the headlights are going against the lumberyard. You know, they're, they're basically closed at, at six o'clock, five o'clock. You know, that's not gonna affect them at all.
Say that again, the lumberyard?
Yes, the lumberyard, our buildings.
Yep.
You know, compared to the residents there, it just, the, the whole site is contained on this east lot. It just makes a hundred percent sense to me.
I, you know, and I, as I recall from the meeting, and I think I've told you that, I told Adam that we'd sure love to have you build here. Don't, don't get us wrong, that's, that's not what we're saying here. But I, I think, you know, as you know, car washes were not allowed. And this, you know, the documentation, they've been denied for the last fifteen years, ever since the original concept. And it was my understanding that you would stay away from that residence side, you know, to the, more to the middle lot. And that's, I mean, that's really why I voted in favor of CUP to allow car washes. I, I think, you know, I, I don't think there's any secret all along that we're really concerned about all the residents on that, west side of that industrial park or retail park, I guess. And that's really our biggest concern. I mean, we'd love to have you here and all that kind of stuff.
And I mean, that east side is, is less restrictive by far than the west side.
So is it the traffic or the noise? Both?
Well, for me, it's the, the traffic, honestly.
Right.
I mean, every, every vehicle coming out of there is gonna be pointed right towards, I don't know, is in Mr.'s house now, or...
That, that ring road's been there for sixteen, twenty years, guys.
One of the, one of the comments made by one of the planning and zoning members was, you know, once that, that traffic exits your lot, you don't have any control over that. You know, they could be leaving there blaring loud radios, you know, just in spite or whatever. You, you don't have any control of that. On the east lot, you do have control of that. It's completely contained to your lot.
No different than any other building going there, not being able to contain somebody's noise of their car coming over.
Right. I, I understand your point too. But if we have another retail building come in and we can get that to go north and south...
Who's to say a retail building can't fit between the west side of my lot and that ring road?
My fault, that, that it wouldn't fit?
Who, who says it can't? Yeah, there's room for a building there yet?
Yes, there is, yeah, for sure. We're anticipating a building coming in.
Even if I'm on the west, on the west side even?
If you are on the west lot, my fault.
It could be parceled again.
No.
Where that berm is.
No, couldn't be. Not if your car wash would go there, because those are your conditions to have that there.
So the, the construction, the, the original pads, was this corrected all the way through or is it pad specific?
The, the site plan has pads.
It, it was corrected all the way through, so it was proposed for a seven hundred and fifty plus or minus strip mall with businesses on the north side and, and the south side.
Right. So they, somewhere, yeah, so the facility could be built anywhere on a pad, all the way up to the bank?
Correct. And then in twenty eighteen, I believe it was, when the, the previous owner of, of this parcel was trying to develop it, we came up with the, what was the twenty eighteen, two ninety-two or something ordinance? And we came up with a site plan of three buildings on this parcel that we're discussing right now, which would be the bank, future retailer, the bank and then two future buildings.
And the planning zoning wants you to be two hundred feet setback. How much, how much is this west lot?
Two hundred feet to the property line, I think it was.
Pretty darn close. Their, their west wall, as, as Mr. Wenzel said, is, yeah, about a hundred and four, so it's that plus or minus ninety-five to a hundred feet. West wall to west wall, it would move.
Again, I, you know, the, the containing of your traffic and you control your whole site. You control all your car movements, your vehicle movements on that site. Ingress, egress, everything. All contained on your site.
I, I am though, in, on the west side, the way it's proposed now, I'm...
No, you're not. You're using the ring road.
That's my property. I get, my property goes all the way down to the fence line of the neighboring residents.
So, so tell me, whatever, where's this Ash Street at? Is it still a private?
Everything's private there.
Correct, yes, it is private.
At, at one time, they came to the city, requested the city to take it over because it was failing.
Correct. And, and at that time, we did not have a policy, so we did establish a policy on what the conditions or requirements would be for the city to consider taking over a private road. In this case, the city chose not to, because it is not built to what the standards that we would have built it to, a nine ton. I believe it's built to a seven ton.
Right.
And we, we, when it was replanted to the fifth edition, I believe, it was platted such that the road in the future could, it would line up with that Baldwin, that right-of-way between Baldwin and, and Ash Street, the private section.
So the cost of this reconstruction theoretically should be all the businesses that are in this retail area?
Correct.
If, if you wanted to build a city spec. Basically, you gotta take the blacktop out and, you know, start over with the base and all that kind of stuff.
Correct, yeah. Any...
It wasn't wide enough too, if I remember correctly.
No, I think it's like four feet narrow, like, yeah.
Right. So we did obtain the, the necessary right-of-way to allow that to happen, potentially allow that to happen in the future.
So the ring road is part of the driveway exit that's part of the car wash property?
Just right on top of the residence, you know? The other one, it doesn't affect anybody. You know, the residents are removed from it. Traffic flows all contained there, not have any effect on any of the surrounding houses.
That ring road was put in twenty years ago. You gotta remember this for use, for traffic use, to get around the front side, the south side of that strip mall that was proposed.
Without a car wash in their west lot.
I think in concept, it was, the idea was for it, much like the liquor store, delivery in and out, truck in, truck out a couple of times a day, deliveries like to Subway. I, I, I don't think, with, with not allowing car washes in there, the volume was, was dialed back. You know, that's...
There, there was like fifteen storefronts rooms on each side of the building. That's a lot more traffic you're gonna see in a given day than a car wash.
Here's the latest proposed, what I have, and they are proposing a, a business to the west, a parking lot to the west side of that, and about a twenty-five or thirty-foot buffer to the curb of grass. You know, that removes that parking lot even further from that ring road.
This would have been the concept that was approved, I believe, in twenty eighteen.
Can I see that once?
And the concern at that time, I was looking through the notes, was before that was passed, the setback was zero feet for that shopping mall. So you, the council at that time changed it to fifty feet and then approved this concept plan.
That's based on most residences. That's right up to the curb that's there, I'm more uncertain.
I think the furthest east site, I mean, it's a home run. It works, it addresses everyone's concerns. It's a lot less restrictive on you for conditional uses.
It looks like you would be shrinking the building size then for that? You would lose one, one wash bay?
Possibly.
Well, I'm not following, if you move it to the east?
If you move to the east, yeah. If you look at the, if you look at the plan, he's got two automatic and then one, one RV.
Those are site concept plans that were back in early July, probably, so. But yeah, no, I'm, I'm still looking at probably downsizing if I gotta go east.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure why would that, why would you have to downsize?
Wouldn't be able to make the turn radius?
It, it's cost.
I, I guess my point, if that pad is all corrected, I mean, there's no necessarily dedicated property line, right? It could be anywhere.
Say that again?
Well, my point is, this is all accretive pad, you know? There's, there's real, there was poor soils back in the day. You may be familiar with that.
Yes.
So my point is, if you moved it over, why would you have to downsize?
Just more, it's more cost. There's a lot of money I got invested in this lot already personally. And there's gonna be more driveway I have to put in, which is a huge part of my project cost. And being that it's a huge, you know, change in scope, to me, that's not a reasonable condition.
It's just unfortunate, because I know in our talks with Mr. Traxler, that was a buffer building to the west. That was clearly understood. I know that for a fact.
I'm sorry, but there's nothing in the meeting minutes stating that, but...
I brought up the concern at that meeting. I was told at that meeting, that's not where that condition gets put on, or it would have been put on strictly to be on this site. And on, you know, on, on this concept plan, and, you know, I don't know exactly where the boundary lines, but it shows that ring road as being a community road, not a private road.
So like I said, these are concept plans. It's just a, a CAD guy doing it. It's not even a preliminary, really, it's just a visual. That's all it is. It's just a CAD drawing from a...
I don't know what that means. So what do you mean? What are you saying?
So it's gonna be something different than this, or...
No, it's, it's, it's a concept plan. It's prior to preliminary plans, basically. It's nothing to go off of. I don't even know why those are out right now. We should have the site plans.
This is what we had at our meeting when it was approved.
But we should have my new site plans out that we're referring to. That way, it's a little more accurate for everybody to refer to.
I, I think, I mean, if, if we were seeing this with the traffic headed right to the residents, we would never would, at least I certainly would have voted for.
Right, I would not have voted for it.
Or even allow, we would just left the CUP without the car wash and not did anything.
I'm looking at an, an aerial view of the whole thing, and the only time that any headlights would be at the, pointing at the residents would be on the curve. If, if they're on the road headed due west, that goes right into the tree line, which runs right along the ditch. So there would only be lights for the ninety to return. And between fencing and screening, I don't see any lights hitting anything.
And there...
I, I think there would be, it would, it would be, look like oncoming traffic. From, I, I just drove on it tonight and...
That would look like oncoming traffic? When you, when you look at that road there?
Right, you're, you're driving, you're, you're shining lights right into these peoples, right over this way. So that's what I mean, looking to like oncoming traffic.
And, and that's where the six foot fence is? And then if you look at the, that west concept plan that was at November meeting?
Sure, sure.
So that does show traffic exiting on that ring road. This was at the last November meeting.
And we were told at that meeting as well, that there would be a ring, that ring road would not be used, there would be a buffer building there. That was what we were told. The developer himself told us that.
The landowner?
Yes.
I don't know, Mr. Webb, any thoughts?
I've been thinking, um, I don't know at this point. I mean, I, I see what you're saying, I see what he's saying. It is a valuable business for the community, but I know the residents at that meeting were concerned about the, the traffic. Well, it'd be helpful, we had the president, the, the bank president here. I know, I know he sent the letter, but it would have been nice to hear his term live. Are you thinking we should table this so we can hear from him?
Well, I, I guess the point is, we don't, can't, well, we could probably table one meeting, but generally, we have to decide.
Okay.
I, I don't even know if the deadline expired, we have to decide tonight.
Let me check the sixty day rule here. It's in the planning packet.
I don't know if that really does much for us. I mean, I, I do agree with Kevin. I mean, I, I did hear the landowners say that there was gonna be a buffer building there, but, but this is what's before us now.
Mr. Mayor, we have until April twenty-ninth, and we can also do an extension if needed.
I just don't know if that's all. Thank you, I just don't know if that solves anything, no, doesn't. I just think that it, right, wrong, whatever, but I, I, I think we've just felt we've been misled here a little bit. I, I think that's been our prime concern, has been the residents. And I, I think everybody involved in this knows that, that, um, if, if we weren't gonna address the residents' concerns, then we certainly would have allowed it, and that's why we didn't allow it back in oh-seven or oh-six.
Or the first time this came proposed on that part of this west lot, in May or whatever that was.
Right.
I remember the, that, I believe at the neighborhood meeting, and one of the big concerns was traffic on Ash Street. So we're not having any reduction on tra, on traffic on Ash Street, it's just gonna fall short one lot. You know, and noise was the other concern, which is both of those sides, but, you know, now, now it, you know, headlights, you know, is an issue, well, if we're talking about restricting hours and screening. Just, you know, there was a lot of conversations that went back and forth, I don't think anything was ever hammered out, we were just talking about viable options.
I don't know, I mean, we certainly would, you know, we certainly want, you know, your car wash here, I don't think there's any doubt about that, so don't get us wrong, I think it's just, you know, we have to address the residents' concern.
I feel like this was a compromise on this, the second time that you applied for it with the east concept. That's what I was under the understanding, where it was going to go.
So we're basically, we're forced to bank to make the decision, 'cause the bank said no already to that, didn't they, they haven't read the right letter?
Yeah.
They're not gonna do it.
He also said there was gonna be a buffer building there too.
Yeah.
So.
In, in like the decimal readings showed that the buffer buildings are louder than the car wash, so they're gonna wish for what they don't want, you know?
And then what happens if that buffer building ends up being a, a restaurant with a drive-through, and now that road is being used? And you have that exact problem, you were worried about headlights and traffic, you're delaying the inevitable?
Well, I, I think the difference is, um, it was unallowed use. And this wasn't, I think, but I, I know what you're saying.
I believe, I believe the reason at that time too was the unallowed use was the, the noise concern, was, was the number one, which is now a factor, so.
No, I agree, you know, you're right, I mean, you, you know, there's no shortage of your efforts, you know, that's not what we're saying.
I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at, if we, if we say no now, it's a good chance it's gonna be gone for good. I think this is a good business for the community, I, that's what I'm torn with, right, so I don't know.
I, I, yeah, you're exactly right, I mean, I, I think we want the car wash, it's unfortunate, I mean, there's a lot of land available where it's already been in allowed use. You know, there, there's multiple properties actually, where you probably buy the land just as cheap as, I, I don't know what the bank is charging you, but. And I think we, we brought that up in the past too, and I think you're pretty adamant to be down here by the bank, which is fine. It's just that, you know, it wasn't allowed in the original CUP. Planning zoning was, was it, everybody was?
Everybody was on board with the two hundred feet, uh, basically put it to that lot adjacent to the bank.
So if, two hundred feet basically, um, I wish you guys had my civil plans in front of you, but two hundred feet basically puts the west side of the building fifteen feet further than what the current east side of the building is.
And again, I, you know, I think the intent is to leave that ring road traffic with a high-volume user not using it. Does the traffic on the west need to go, on the west side, concept plan need to go west, could it not go east?
I mean, I'd have to move my building towards the residents a little further and not have room for the berm to make a wraparound. I got the plans.
They're ready to make it a one-way and just go in.
Right.
How do they access the back of, Monza Liquor, for example?
Uh, on the east side of the building.
I don't think that goes, that goes to Snap and stops, right at the bank?
Correct, that was part of the plan when the, when the bank constructed their, their project.
Okay.
So you're saying, what if they come in and just made it a one-way? And you wouldn't be affected by it?
Right.
So that east.
That's what the bank is doing right now, if they're gonna go for coffee.
Yes, the bank is enter here, um, that ring road attaches there, but shut off here at Snap.
So everything is contained on, on their property, they enter from the, the west side, south, and then travel east through their main parking lot.
And that's how you have to enter, uh, business with a drive-through, obviously.
'Cause I guess I can't remember off the top of my head if, if that, their main access, 'cause there's a separate drive-through to the coffee pool, I believe. If that is wide enough for, for, for two-way traffic, or if it is just in from Ash Street. So there's a parking lot there too, between the drive-through and, and the main entrance to the bank.
So you're saying this, your west wall is a hundred feet setback, is that what that is?
Plus or minus, yes.
These are building with.
Those civil plans are a part of the planning commission packet attachment, if you're looking for those.
So tell me again, if you made this access, um, the people went out to the east, is that doable or not?
It would be, but not with that plat currently, so I'd have to move the, it just, there's not enough room to make the corner.
This way?
Yeah, and it stay on like property here?
Almost like using the ring road and going down to here.
So I don't have to buy that property from.
Yeah, 'cause that's private property.
That's, that's private property here, so I'd have to move this over to make that.
It's the same loop as what the east property is gonna require.
How long have we had, how long has the old other car wash been up on the hill there?
Two thousand fourteen, I think.
Two thousand fourteen, so.
He was all probably back in the seven or eight.
Yeah, I don't think it was too, too much after it was requested for rolling ridge.
I was just curious, just, 'cause thinking about it, every vehicle that went in, approached from the south, goes in, turns around, comes out, and is pointing south. And they're pointing, there's, uh, four residents directly across the field from there.
What are you talking about, the old?
Field, field, car wash, and shining right at those houses.
It's no different, Casey's at three in the morning, or?
I, I think the difference is, it still goes back, there was an allowed use.
Well, it is now, it is now a lot of use, so now we're, you know.
With the condition.
Well, yeah, I understand, well, yeah, that's, we're trying to determine what the conditions are, but.
No, I know what you're saying, you're right.
And so the ring road is private property then, to each lot owner?
Yep.
So you could technically landlocked the person in the middle, if you didn't want them to drive on your piece of ring road.
Well, the bank kinda did, at Snap, right at Snap thing.
Yeah.
That's why these PUDs are always, and then when the road goes ahead, they come back to the city to fix their own and bail us out. So if the traffic comes on you, it's this way.
I think that's a compromise.
Would you allow the building to move further to the west to, to have them turn on that same parcel?
I think you'd have to get so far to the property line that, you know, like this east concept, that'd be, that again would be so close to the residents, you know, 'cause you'd have to probably go to the road almost.
Yeah, you'd have to go.
Well, I mean, does the vacuum station have to be, I mean, does this have to be a square pad?
Right. No, the vacuum station could get shuffled around, or stay there, get pushed back to the south further. I would.
Well, that's what I mean, would that open up that corner?
Yeah, so if, if the building could move to the west thirty feet, forty feet, I would just have to move my automatic wash bay to the east side of my building. That way, that's just small cars, they can make sharp corners, so they can turn to the east then, and then the cars and the big bays got room to really swing out and turn around to the east and back down to Ash Street.
And that front end road that goes between the west parcel and the bank, you know, here's existing front end road is what is on here, that leads me to, you know, I had always thought that that was, uh, basically the whole unit shared that.
It's, yeah, it gets parceled off, so I could close that right down and, on each end. Private.
Do you think that will satisfy the neighbors?
He's saying that it's not an option to go that way, I, I think that way would work.
I, I'm not saying it's not an option, I gotta talk to the property owner, I mean, it's not technically spoken, I haven't spoken for that chunk of land, and, and then. They have that much more driveway and I don't.
Kind of off-target here from what we all.
Right, so it's hard to alter course now, and then I thought we had a plan made out with the east concept.
So are we saying that we should go back to the property owner and talk about this, and come back on thirteen, or is that?
So if you were on this lot here, which way would that traffic exit?
Not using the ring road.
Well.
Yeah, I was on, completely under the impression it was gonna be the east concept, you know, that's what basically was.
That's why we allowed the, made it allowed use.
Spoke for at the meeting.
If, if that was, I mean, that's, not saying how you felt different, but if that's the way it was really spoken, I would have proposed it this way, that way. I'm not here to spend my own money to guess it, it kinda was a guess, I guess, 'cause there was no real direction on what site to do. So if this gets moved, I got all these fees to pay again to go through this whole process, and to get civil out there, soil borings, that lot has a lot more bad soils, probably looking at a hundred thousand dollars there.
All right, tell me about your, the incidental fees you'd have again, what, what fees would you have again, you mean?
Well, wouldn't I have to resubmit a preliminary plat, final plat, a conditional use permit and all that, or?
The plat would depend if you're changing the proposed parcels or not, or if you would fit within that proposed lot too, but yeah, the site plan. And then your soil borings, you said, you would need new soil borings. Um, I don't think we would charge fees again.
Right, that's where I was headed, I think those fees went, we would not charge again. And my question as far as the soil borings, you know, I, I've, that whole pad correction deal was not the best, that was obviously way before us, but that's not the best plan of attack. It maybe would have been better off just leaving then, when you get a lot, design lot then corrected, 'cause now everybody's just guessing, now you're doing soil borings over again, and, you know, you just. It just wasn't the best laid-out plan, but regardless, it is what it is today. But I, you know, I, I guess the, the dilemma is, you know, of course, if you were on this lot, you really have a lot less restrictions on you. You know, if, you know, I don't even know what, what hours, has that been determined, the hours of operation?
Uh, there was just, um, talk about it at the, at the last meeting.
So I guess my, my, that raises a good question, so now I, you know, going back to, you know, you interpreted one thing, and the bank interpreted, and the planning zoning, the council, we all interpreting different things. I, ideally, what are your hours of operation?
I propose twenty-four, seven, um, but that would, there would always be a set time that this building would be closed at night and opened in the morning. I just wanted the flexibility in case I wasn't able to get there to close it, that if it stayed open, it would be fine.
So I, and I, I think, I'm just speaking for myself, of course, but I think we'd be more apt to longer hours or open more for business on the interior lot, 'cause it has, again, less impacts on the residents. You know, I don't know if we would go twenty-four, seven, but I could, you know, I, I could see many more hours of operation than the west lot. And I don't know if that adds value, or if that is a moot point, you know, again, we, we're not here to antagonize you, you know, we want you to build, it sounds like a great building, it's a big investment, and appreciate that. Where we're just trying to address the residents' concern, and as you know, they're pretty, pretty adamant about, about this location.
Building's a very nice-looking building, that's for sure.
Right, it's, yeah, yeah. So I, I guess, I mean, quite honestly, would there be any consideration for, for that, if you approached the bank and?
Yeah.
I mean, again, I mean, we, we have the city fees, you probably get, like you say, more hours of operation.
Can we, can we talk hours of operation per lot, if which is which, or can we?
Well, it'd be, be nice to know that, I guess, for all parties.
Can we go through all the conditions and, or?
Uh, sure, uh, at the planning, at the planning commission, uh, really, the only condition that was approved was a two-hundred-foot setback.
Right.
That was the only condition that it was approved on, on a unanimous vote, um, looking back at the minutes from the car wash that's, um, up on Commerce Drive, um, those hours are seven AM to ten PM.
Right. Silver, silver bullet, six AM to ten PM.
Yeah, and then I think maybe even dusk or eight then, certain hours.
Winter, winter time or something.
For example, on this one, are we okay like six AM to midnight, or something like that?
On the east parcel?
Yeah, or twenty, I don't know if you want twenty-four, seven, I don't, you know.
Well, you made the comment about if you couldn't get there to close it, so are you, do you do that nightly?
Yes.
So you open and close it?
Mm-hmm.
Could, can you give computerized locks for the doors, or?
So opening's fairly simple, I think, you just, doors open, computer system turns on.
Yep.
But when people are in there, you gotta kick them out to lock the doors, um, so it gets tricky on the closing, but.
What, what is like new break-quick trips, what, what hours are they, anybody know, are they twenty-four, seven, or?
I don't know.
I, I'm not sure.
I mean, I, I think you've done a lot of due diligence as far as the noise, and you've addressed a lot of the concerns, so don't, don't get us wrong.
I would tend to think the quick trips would be twenty-four, seven.
I mean, I, I certainly think I'd, I'd be open to that if it's on the.
If it's on the east lot, I don't think I would oppose that personally.
I think it certainly gives us more flexibility to, you know. You wanna be a good neighbor, we wanna, we wanna make it, do as much as we can to get it to fit here, if, if it is all. If, if it is all possible.
Yeah, uh, Quick Trips, twenty-four hours a day car wash.
I mean, I, I think I'd be okay with that, honestly.
On the east lot.
On the east lot. It's really, I mean.
So what, what, is there any other expenses we could help minimize by moving to that east lot? Is there, I mean, if we eliminate the fees or waive the fees?
Fees would be the biggest thing, I guess. I mean, soil borings.
Did you take a lot of the design, move, incorporate the whole design into it?
Yeah, the architectural's no big deal. Um, civil, there you gotta go and survey that again. Um, and then pay in twelve, fifteen grand to do soil borings again, but.
I would suspect those soil borings still hold a value to the landowner. You know, it's not like they're gonna be wasted.
Right.
I don't know if, you know, if the landowner would have any consideration of cost sharing of that or participate in that, but don't. I know my bank would, but I'm just saying.
Well, that could, I guess that could be a selling point for that, that other lot, that those pads, they've already been done.
Right, right. And you, you know, whether you agree or not or whatever, but I, I do know that, that Traxor said that they plan to have another building there on that west lot. So like I say, it's not like it's a waste. It's just, you know, the cost. I mean, that would be, that would be my opinion. If the planning's only, only approved one criteria of two-hundred-foot setback, I think that east lot, you're basically off and running with, with what you wanna do there, you know.
Can we run through?
Can I speak to that actually?
Sure, sure.
Um, it was my understanding, they approved the conditional use permit as presented, plus that condition, minus the fencing and berms. So there were some other conditions in here that I'd want you to look at.
Do you wanna read them off?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we actually, if we're going in this direction, the last three pages of the packet, the second permit with the redlining.
What is that, four, four B?
So that would be in four. The last, it's the last three pages of my staff report. And attachment four from your email. Let me know when you're there.
Let's say I'm in four B. It's not four B.
Just four.
Okay.
All right, so.
Okay.
Okay. So the address would change. Joel can probably make one up right now. The property area would change to one point three four instead of one point three one if the intent is to go with the plat that was proposed.
The east plat adjacent to the bank.
Parcel two of sixth edition plat proposed with the application. Okay, so, and then C, site developments and improvements. Um, the subject property will be developed according to applicable city zoning standards and will obtain approvals prior, prior to this permit being valid. So that's just speaking to the site plan and the plating process. Um, and then some of these conditions are pretty standard on any conditional use permit. So number one, um, must comply with the PUD standards, which it does. Number two, working with the Rolling Ridge Marketplace Owners Association. Number three is that interior wash and dry cycle. Um, with the applicant, he asked that we add the word automatic there, so it's just the automatic wash bay. Number four is that proposed residential setback. And then taking out the proposed screening berm, the screening fence to the west, the tree screening to the west, which was speaking to replacing any trees if they were removed in case the fence and the trees didn't fit together properly, removing the screening to the south. Um, the allowed outside activity within this PUD, you need to get that approved as part of your permit, any outside activity. So I added that for the vacuum stations with the condition that they're on the southeastern corner of the lot. So we could remove that, the location requirement of that, but we do need a condition to allow the vacuum stations as part of the PUD. The garbage dumpster enclosure, another standard condition we have. We want that to match the principal building and have a gate. The ring road. Um, we worked with the applicant to reword this. If it remains less than twenty-four feet, uh, must be signed for one-way traffic with directional signage approved through the sign permit process.
Here, we should talk on, so the ring road, will you just bring the traffic right back past the bank?
On the east side.
Is that what we're saying?
On the east side, it's proposed to stay all on the site, but I mean, maybe you could work something out and share it with him.
If I could work something out, I mean, obviously, the, the traffic's gotta exit to the south and turn to the east.
Right.
Whether it's on the bank's property or my own property.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So do we wanna add verbiage that the one-way traffic will go east? Okay. Um, city engineer approval, building permit approval, sign permit approval, those are all standard um, in any conditional use permit that we've done recently. Proof of ownership, um, since we're changing the location, we would want a new purchase agreement. In this case, we accepted a letter of intent. So either a new letter of intent or purchase agreement prior to the building permit. Um, termination of permit, that's another standard condition. And criminal penalty, another standard condition.
Okay, we should, we should give, um, the applicant some indication of the hours of operation, so we all know what we're talking about.
It's on the east side. I would be fine with twenty-four seven.
I think that could be.
Okay.
I think that's a workable number.
Okay, any comments on that?
Um, on the operation? No. We're just talking about address.
Um, is there any other gray areas that we're not touching on? I would suspect that, uh, the outside soils you could use for a berm to eliminate hauling off. I would suspect that would minimize your costs. I, I guess if you can agree to that, then I think. And, uh, I mean, I would agree then.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot less conditions from the east side, that's for sure.
Can I, uh, agree to that at a later date or does it gotta be right now? How's that work?
I, I think the only urgency is we have to deny or, well, or approve or deny the current application.
Correct.
That, that decision has to be made, so we would have to deny it.
Right.
But I, I think upon that, I think, you know, again, I'm just speaking for myself. I think we would agree to waive the fees for the re-application process and all that kinda stuff to move it to the next lot. So you don't accrue any city fees and, and, you know, like I said, other than the road and the twenty-four hours. So to answer your question, we would have to deny the, this application before us, just because of the timeline.
Yep. I can accept that.
And you were saying about a berm, but if you did the, on the east?
He does, well, he doesn't.
It wouldn't be necessary.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, so.
But my point is, if you've got dirt, it doesn't.
Oh, they, they could just, they could move it off to the other, the other site for some other use. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I was, I was like, there's, 'cause this is virtually gonna be bituminous. I mean, you're gonna have a postage stamp of grass.
Right.
Unless he could work something out with the bank and widen their road and maybe, you know.
Yeah, I, but realistically, I mean.
My, my point was just if you could save money, that's all. Okay, are we gonna leave it at that? Mr. Attorney, is that good enough?
It is, Mayor. I'd recommend approval to CUP with the revised conditions.
That we just went over.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
And then he'll have an opportunity to revise the site plans and the planning commission can take the matter up and give you a recommendation with the recommendations or the revisions that will be made to conform to, to tonight's approval.
Okay, so do we have all the things we talked about?
Yeah, I believe it's the same as the, the redline version. Um, just adding, um, hours of operation are twenty-four seven. And, uh, number seven is the, ring road goes to the east.
Okay, so how would you like the motion to?
Motion to approve to CUP with the conditions specified.
Okay.
I move we approve the CUP with a two-hundred-foot setback. Twenty-four seven hours of operation, the ring road exiting towards the east.
And number two, not two.
On the east lot, adjacent to the bank. And the other remaining conditions of the existing PUD. So.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. We got that. Motion, my counsel, Kadada. Second, my counsel, Webb. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Does anything we can do to expedite the process? You know, just, I appreciate it. Thank you. Consider approval to submit a statewide health improvement partnership funding request. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you is a draft funding request for SHIP regarding a pedestrian and bike lane demonstration project on Industrial Drive. Um, last year, you may remember, the city received SHIP funding, which is called Active Living Funding, to install a pedestrian and bike lane demonstration, demonstration project on Birch Street Northeast. I put some pictures in there. Um, so the project consists of flexible bollards affixed to the street with stickers, paint. Stencils were used to make the pedestrian images and safety signage. Let's see here. The project was a success, uh, which Dornfeld will talk to in a minute here, um, showing heavy use on a demonstration trail. These demonstration projects are intended to be short-term, low-cost, and evaluate potential infrastructure improvements before investing in the permanent changes. Um, the SHIP requirements for the funding is that it must be sustainable, must involve a policy or system change, can be an environmental change, but must also include a policy change, and they do require a ten percent match. Um, we attended an information session where we were told that SHIP has remaining funds from last year. So we got together, our staff, to think of additional projects and we brought this to the park board for consideration. So what we're proposing, um, is an installation near where the new skate park is going because of the anticipated increase in pedestrian, skateboarding and biking traffic to the park. We're proposing a six-foot wide lane instead of a ten-foot wide lane because of the width of the road there. So I included a couple of images, the red line showing from the parking lot over to Willow Creek Drive Southeast, which connects to the trail going north to the boardwalk. And then a street view image showing what the street looks like along with those measurements of the road. So with, um, six feet on the shoulder dedicated to the demonstration lane, we're still left with, um, over twenty-four feet for that two-way traffic. Um, I did speak with staff at SHIP and they think it's a good project idea. Um, there's no guarantee of funding, but he, he said he'd like to see an application submitted. Um, I put together the budget with Dornfeld and, um, the SHIP request would be around forty-three hundred. So the city match would be about four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Um, the park board and staff's recommendation is to submit the attached funding request. And the fiscal impact would be public works, in-kind staff time and the ten percent cash match. Alternatives are do not vote to submit the funding request and the funding request is attached. I don't know if, Joe, you wanted to add anything at this time or?
I, I just put the skate park going there. Being such a busy road with commercial traffic, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea based on the success of the one on Birch Northeast.
The one on Birch was used a lot.
How many times did the bollards get run over?
Zero.
Crosswalks I'm not so lucky.
Crosswalks.
Okay, all right, all right. Is there any, this concerns me because the traffic on Industrial Drive is crazy.
Very.
It, it's a speed thing. Everybody's all over the road. If coming around the corner there, you better be in your lane or you, there's gonna be trouble. Is there any option, I mean, have we striped it lately? Have we striped it ever?
For the demonstration.
Center, center, no, center line strip, striping, so that people, I mean, people drive all over on the road. It's just like fair game, 'cause it's kind of, you know, out in the middle. I shouldn't say out in the middle of nowhere, but.
Uh, well, we spoke at the staff level for that concern coming around that corner. There's gonna have to be some delineation to move over.
Or, or signage that says something.
Right.
Bollards in your way all of a sudden. Which is better than somebody pushing a stroller, right?
Yes, yes. Or do we need some, you know, signage, uh, on, on both? Some ki, on something, I'm not sure.
Some warning signs.
Some warning kind of signs, yes, to, to.
Traffic change ahead.
Some, yeah, whatever, whatever it needs to be. Because it's such a blind corner coming around there.
It is a little ways from the corner.
Yes.
But, but still, yes.
But, yeah.
It's a mildly laced corner. And at one point, when that road gets reconstructed, it's going to be proposed by the, um, park board to have a trail go on the, on the south side of the curb.
Yeah.
And this is kind of the transition.
Right.
I think in my personal experience, the pedestrians, if you kept going west and around the corner to the north, that's the real danger.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing there.
There's, you're on top of them right now. This is, uh, it, it is what it says. It's a demonstration and it's just a crying barrier.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a good idea for, being that it's gonna be right, you know, the skate park, that's, you know, that's a good option. We just have to consider all the parts of it too.
Yes.
Not exactly a, it's a, it's a quick, it's a quick road.
And will we approve, uh, to submit a statewide health improvement partnership regarding the trail we talked about?
Motion, my counsel, Kadada.
Second.
Second, my counsel, Webb. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Consider approval to submit a letter of inquiry for funding to the National Skate Park Project National Grant Program. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, speaking of the skate park, um, attached, we have a letter of inquiry for the Skate Park Project National Grant Program, formerly known as the Tony Hawk Foundation. Um, the park board looked into grants and this is what we came up with. Um, the Parks and Recreation Commission also approved, um, a letter of support to include with the letter of inquiry at the last meeting. Um, we looked through old files and found past letters of support, including the two signature pages that one young resident had included with his letter. So I put together, um, with Joel's help, this letter of inquiry and attached the letters of support and were requesting permission to submit the letter of inquiry and move forward, trying to obtain funding in support of the Skate Park Project.
Kind of funding to, to see some of those, uh, old letters. Some of the kids are probably.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
From the first ones that came through.
Even if it's from four years ago, you wonder if they're still.
Yep. It could be great to get anything we could, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
And will we, uh, send a letter for funding?
Motion, my counsel, Kadada.
Second.
Second, my counsel, person of fury. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. That concludes the planned agenda. Onto department reports, Mr. Dornfeld. Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The street department, we've been addressing streets that didn't fare very well through the winter, uh, reaching out. Different options. And with that said, we've been pothole patching the ones we can with cold mix. Hoping the plants fire up soon for the real stuff. Um, we have installing the signs. We have installing the signs that were left over from last year's sign project in the northeast. Street sweeping and just getting prices on paint and things coming up for summer. Water, everything is running smooth. Ross and I from WSB have been going over the detail plates for the upcoming projects in the future, just making sure everything's in check. If there's any updates or changes, you guys will be notified. Sewer, the intermediate list station pump and VFD insurance claims are in and scheduled to be put in on Wednesday. Drafting an RFP for jetting, televising, and manhole ceiling. Just been kind of finalizing up some chloride variance paperwork with Joel for the park. The spring thaw, the skate park project is back up and running. They're kind of loosening up from the frozen ground. Trees are down at Trend of Memorial. There's one tree left to trim, and the stumps have to be ground. We've cut some trees down at Marley Park that were dead. Pricing is out for ADA restaurants for summer. And pollinator grant has been submitted. We're expecting news for the end of April. And last thing is just soccer and Little League scheduling is, is already starting, so.
And we'll have portable satellites at the soccer fields.
Yes, yep. We've suggested to have one in the, the east parking lot.
Yep. Okay. Thank you for all your work, sir.
Thank you.
Doing a good job. Shabani Bison, anything else?
I just want to give you an update on the upcoming construction project. So the Millen overly project on the northeast end of town and then the parking lot out here in the city hall. McNamara was the awarded contractor. We are planning to have a pre-construction meeting with them on April 18th, and they want to get going right away in May. They're thinking it's a two-week duration. And so when we have that pre-construction meeting and get more of a solid schedule, we'll also be sending letters to residents impacted by that project, letting them know schedule and who to contact and, you know, what'll park on the street, things like that. And then for the trail project, that was awarded to M&amp;W Black Topping. And they indicated they would complete the work or start the work in June, early to mid-June, about three-week duration for that. We will have a pre-construction meeting in May to get their final schedule. And then also with that one, we'll be sending letters to residents, letting them know and obtaining right of entries. You know, if we need to enter the property, especially over by Trenda Park with that green panel installation on the north side of the park trail. And then the Stupus Gate Park project, that council awarded that to BKJ Excavating. They would like to start early in May as well. They're thinking a two-to-three week duration as well. So the other two projects, we have contract documents ready. We're still waiting for the KJ's of the Stupus Park. So once we get those, we'll get a pre-construction meeting and get a firm schedule on that as well. And their concrete subcontractor, yeah. And then the Casaflo reconstruction project that they awarded to IMS Contract doing the county set over the city crosslift. And it was a little bit less than what was provided to the council for, I didn't bring the number with me. But again, that project, they're going to be closing the road from June 5th to September 1st outside of full session with the detour on A and Main Street. Fire Department would have access, grab access at all times. Eighth Avenue would be open at intersection. And they're still, and they'll communicate with us. Some discussions that some of you have, and we're all concerned with. And then how they're going to be communicating with the public. And then just give us what, like, for construction, so that we can access. About what I know. And then there's, there's water, water work, the facilities work that we will be inspecting on behalf of the city. And then there's some discussion about just the parks and this kind of direct traffic and things like that. So I think that, again, that pre-construction meeting is not good set, but as we get closer, we'll provide more updates.
Okay, I think you touched on, you keep an eye on the park accessibility and those kind of things for summers. Okay, thank you. Ms. Jarxson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just to follow up on what Shabani said about County Road 4. We did have a preliminary meeting with Rice County last week just to talk about those, those exact things, access to the JC Park. What, what they're, or what we proposed is, since County Road 4 is going to be closed using Seventh Avenue to Arizona, they are going to keep main, maintained access from Highway 19 to Fifth Avenue Northwest. So the dental office, smoke, the fire department, they'll have regularly maintained access. Trying to think what else we, we went over Community Days, and that's when we came up with Main Street being closed and coming up with the option for a detour. I think those are the main things that we, that we talked about, so.
Yeah, they'll give us signage.
Yep. As far as communication, they're going to have a, a website, so we'll just direct them to, to the website and have, you know, contact phone numbers for them to call. We'll just have it be, anyone can call, obviously, City Hall and get that info. It'll also be on our website as well, and just a direct link to the county's highway department's website and, and the project. As far as updates for City Hall, our audit, our 2022 audit is in progress. The city treasurer and I met with several banks on investments since RASAR have increased quite a bit here lately. So we've been moving money around to maximize interest rates. We did close earlier this month on the lot that we owned south of Dollar General. So that's all in different ownership and, and taken care of. I had a Zoom meeting with MinDOT on the Highway 19 Millen, or obviously with WSB on the Highway 19 Millen Overlay project for '28, just kind of going over some of the proposed improvements. And I think the next step is for MinDOT to have their ADA staff come out and look at the sidewalks and pet ramps, things like that, and for incorporation into the, to the project. I've had several meetings with IT companies on managed services, backups, some IT equipment, things like that. So working on bringing a proposal to the council or an RFP to the council for, for review and consideration. Seasonal Public Works Employees Apps were due last Friday, so we've reviewed those, and those will be going out to HR for interviews probably next week, end of next week, beginning of the following, following week, and presenting our recommendations to the council at the April 13th meeting. Anticipated start for two of them will be, you know, on or about that May 1st, and then probably the other two high school age students starting around June 1st. I got ACH policy drafted, so I'll be reviewing that with staff and bringing that to the council as well. Just seems like that's the direction that we're having to go. I think in the last six months, we've had to stop payment and reissue che- on more checks than we have in the previous 10 years, so. Just seems easier to, to create the policy and just have payments made that way. Maybe Mayor Rudolph touched base on this, but we did meet with Rice County and talked about economic development and a couple other things last week, I believe. Felt it was a pretty productive meeting, and it's always nice to get some face time with the county administrator and, and a couple county commissioners. I'll be attending a loss control meeting, workshop on the 5th. Working to update the downtown business signs. We've had some name changes, so I want to update those. And then the bids for the fire department concrete project are due tomorrow, so they will be presented at the April 13th meeting as well.
You're a busy man.
We all are. We all are.
But not like you, Joel. Thank you.
A little bit of everything.
Thanks for all your work, sir. Ms. Shepherd, ready to go?
All right, yes, for the building department. We're only accepting our building and zoning permits online now, which is going well. Few kinks here and there to work out, but we're getting through them easily. Working on the 2022 community development report that Ben used to give you guys, so that'll be at the next council meeting. So far this year, we've had 78 permits come in, and we have had a handful of new homes come in, so that's good to see. We're anticipating some land use applications from Gary Toopie for Bastier Point. He's proposing the northern nine residential lots that were from that concept plan he brought to you last year. So we're working with him on that. The Planning Commission is going to host the EDA for a joint housing meeting discussion at their next meeting. I updated some of the land use application forms to streamline our process as well, which will help developers. Continuing to update the website, I think I've heard from every department head now, and we've had most of it updated. Here and there, we'll find something that, that needs updating, but it should be pretty much up to date now. We are going out for quotes on new website hosting because GovOffice, which has switched to Catalyst, is doing mandatory redesigns. I think we're on a 20-year-old template that isn't responsive or mobile-friendly. So the price is going to increase exponentially. So we thought we should go out for quotes to see what other options are out there at this time.
So you changed email address, there's no like kind of stuff then? Is that what's going to happen, or not necessarily?
That's a good question.
No, we own the domain name.
Okay.
Of LaundsdaleAMN.com.
Okay. All right, I just completed my first election judge training.
Great.
Went well.
Great.
Joel's excited to train me in.
We're taking all the drama at the election now.
Can't wait.
Nothing like that.
Paper balance, we'll be fine.
I know why I'm here.
Just remember your coffee, you'll be fine.
Regarding the town ball tour with Fox 9, the ACES did meet with Fox 9, so we have a little more information on that. The game's probably going to start at 7:00 or 7:30. Park Board's looking at doing additional activities, bounce houses. They have these blow-up fast pitch games you can rent. So we're looking into providing some of that. So we may be coming to you for a funding request at the next meeting.
Oh, what day was that again?
That's July 19th, it's a Wednesday. So the ACES are doing some things, and then we reserved Rayan Field to do some more stuff to make it more of a community event.
Sure.
And then besides that, a lot of the other things I've been working on were presented tonight, so.
Okay, thank you for all your work. Looks like you're getting settled into your job pretty well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilman Webb?
The liquor store, I don't have anything new for that. The library board, see, they got about $800 from their book sale. And so they're looking to figure out what they can do with that kind of money, so. That's, so I had nothing new from anything else, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that. Councilman Carrada?
Parks and Planning and zoning event here, I believe, a week ago Monday. We went over everything in the parks. Besides, there was a vending machine request for one of the parks, and as of now, we are discarding that. So it was a, it was a hockey association that wanted to put it, and we just thought it might be kind of a hockey situation to get into it. Us providing some of the site and them providing the vending machine and stepping on lions' toes for concessions and.
God, don't do that.
Right? As of this point, we are not recommending that.
I'm already a probation, I think.
Other than that, everything that we covered was talked about tonight for both meetings.
That's all, yeah. Thank you for all your work, sir. Councilperson Fuhrer?
The EDA met on the 16th of March. We got introduced to Jamie. She was, she was able to, will be attending our EDA meetings. We went through some marketing, looking at possibly marketing Laundsdale and some print ads in the newspapers. But looking pretty expensive. We're not quite sure that's the option for us. And then also looking to partner with the Chamber with some Chamber events that.
Good.
Look together with them.
Good, nice, nice. Thank you, thanks for all your work. Councilman Palava?
Based on what you said on the Chamber stuff, really all I have coming up, the Chamber has the Laundsdale Street Fair Business Expo, May 16th. It'll be over on Ash Street over by the bank and McIntunes over there, so. Fourth year we've done that, so that'll be coming up.
Are you still the president of the Chamber?
Yeah.
Doing a great job.
Oh, wow. You haven't been to any meetings. Doesn't bode well when I forgot about the meetings. But, yeah, I, I got there. But yeah, that's all we got going on right now. Obviously, getting ready for Community Day, which we covered tonight, so.
Good, good, there. All right, thank you, sir, thank you for all your work. I just, a couple of things, as Joel mentioned, we did meet with Rice County with the administrator and Commissioner Dawkins. One thing, maybe Jamie probably will bring that up at your meeting, is the affordable housing and the workforce housing, all those kind of things. I think they, they certainly feel that there's a need here, and they had some funding options from some parties. Three, Three Rivers, I think was. So anyway, I'm sure they'll bring that up. More the, the bigger issue, this is something we've been working on for a long time. So we've been pushing a little harder on this Rice County shop over here, especially the piles and the ragweed growing out of the piles. And I said, you know, you, you really got to get this cleaned up here. That wouldn't be allowed in any other city. And so Dawkins did call me back, and we did push to about maybe figuring out some place, some way of purchasing it and moving them out. And he, he brought up the Transportation Committee, so there, I guess now they're a little more open-minded about it. So I, I think they're, they're probably open to some kind of proposal. And I, I don't know exactly what that means, but they, I think they only have, you know, two units and a couple of pickups that are in, in a building. So I don't know if, you know, if there's other options that we could work out. And I guess I don't even know the condition of this building, but at a minimum, it'd be nice to get rid of all the piles and all that kind of jazz, but, you know, from what I understand, Joel mentioned it was just re-lufted. And I think, you know, I don't know if you'd use it for whatever, pickleball or volleyball or wreck building or whatever, but.
Cool storage. Cool storage, I don't think.
Now we're too late, right? But, so if, if, you know, if you kind of think about this a little bit, if there's some, some other options, you know, I, I think, I certainly would like to see that cleaned up and, and make the whole area so nicer. So I don't know if, you know, I, I thought in one time, maybe we could, you know, maybe barter a couple acres on the south end of Industrial Park or something, you know, and maybe you don't want to do that either. But they don't necessarily have to be in town, he said, which really would, would make sense, too. But anyway, if you just want to think about, at least they're, at least now they're open to talking about and all that kind of stuff. Like I said, at a minimum, if they can clean up the piles, everything and stuff. But anyway, that's really was, was kind of all I thought of. I think after two and a half hours, we're probably good for tonight.
Yes.
Is everybody good? All right, we should call it a night.
Motion adjourned.
Yeah, what are you betting all night? Second by Councilperson Fuhrer, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, this meeting adjourned.